Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the city council minutes. Pardon? Oh, roll call, thank you. I skipped that. Clerk, call roll please. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Paul Aziz.
Here.
Counselor Jason Boland.
Here.
Counselor Bob Elliott.
Here.
Thank you.
Can't hear ya.
Counselor Floyd Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Rebecca Grizzle.
Here.
Counselor Wayne Reese Camp.
Here.
And Counselor Barry Scott.
Here.
Thank you.
Now that we've called roll, we'll go for the approval of the city council minutes. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? See none? Do I have a motion?
Will for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve city council minutes from June 12, 2013. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes pass. Consent calendar? Are there any additions or corrections to the consent calendar?
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is passed. National Night Out, August 6, 2013 proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch and Target is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 6, 2013 entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 30th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Lebanon, Oregon to join forces with other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the City of Lebanon plays a vital role in assisting the Lebanon Police Department through local joint crime prevention efforts by supporting National Night Out 2013 in Lebanon. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Lebanon be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crimes. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore, I, Paul R. Aziz, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6, 2013, as National Night Out in our city. And call upon all citizens of Lebanon to join the Lebanon Police Department, the National Association of Town Watch, and Target in supporting the 30th Annual National Night Out. And that is an awesome night went last year. The Police Department and everybody did a great job on that. Looking forward to that. Did you have any comments? You're welcome. Okay, at this time, public comments. Council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments. Council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. And you'll have five minutes and they'll have a timer that will go yellow at four and it will go red at five minutes. Anyone would like to speak to the council?
I gave you a breather last time. I had to go play. And I'm going to give some of you a heart attack right off the bat. I wanted to apologize to the mayor and the new council about the letter that I wrote about the contingency funds supposedly should have been affiliated at the time that they bribed Lo to come to town and was never done. When I've got bills to pay, I either pay it at the time or appropriate funds to pay it when due. My understanding from what I've read and so on, the city has to borrow $12 million to pay for loans and to pay for Lynn Benton, which we were told here that evening that they give Lynn Benton a million for, that they had the money in their pocket, which sounds to me as a damn lie. So I would like to know why we was lied to and the monies wasn't appropriated from day one, once they started the bribe, so they had the monies to pay. Does anybody have any idea?
I'm not sure.
So they figured, I mean, you know, if you'd want to schedule a time and come in and talk to me about your questions, I'd be happy to give you my perspective as the interim city manager on the incentive package, not a bribe, but the incentive package that was put together by the City of Lebanon as part of attracting that massive investment and those jobs to this community. I'm not prepared to debate with any citizen, you or anyone else, about what's happened in the past or questions that you have.
Well, I understand. It's not your fault.
Well, but I'm just saying, I don't think you're going to hear from anyone else up here in a position to have that discussion with you. Again, happy to meet with you and walk you through what my perspective is on it, but I don't think you're going to get your answers in a two-minute response during visitor comments.
But like I said, if I've got a done due, I either pay it at the time or make an arrangement somehow to pay that sucker. When it is due, there's monies there to pay it. The city has to borrow the $12 million, my understanding, plus pay the interest.
Yeah, I understand.
And I understand where you're coming from, sir, about, you say it's not a bribe, but it happens to every city jurisdiction. When they want a company to come in, they butter things up to bring them in. But I still say, quote-unquote, "It's a bribe." And that's all I have to say. So I might give you a call because I would like to know how come, why, for's that we don't make preparation to pay our bills when they are due.
Yeah, and I...
The interest, I don't know how much the interest would be on $12 million, but that would be enough for all of us to go take a day off, go fishing or something important. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Anyone else have comments?
I'm an attorney for Ray, and Ray is handing out a couple of cases, public records cases involving police departments. We had, Ray had asked the mayor to put on the agenda a response to his request for public records about the Fiala incident that cost the city $125,000, perhaps more. You're getting copies of both cases. They're all stapled together, but you'll be able to see when you get to one because there's a divider in the middle. One of the cases...
Could I ask you to move that microphone a little closer there so the audience can hear you? Thank you.
Yeah, these are both out of Portland, and that's primarily because Oregonian litigates, and most small towns don't. I mean, the newspapers in the small towns. In one of the cases, an officer ended up not following procedures, pulling, trying to subdue a person by pulling their hair, firing at her car, and it was eventually given about 900 hours of unpaid time off for that. And the Court of Appeals, as well as the trial court, ordered that disclosed to the public because it was in the public interest. That's the first case. The second case is, again, in the materials, and this involved a Portland police captain who was investigated for hiring escort services off-duty, and which services were associated with prostitution. That again, the court, the trial court and the Court of Appeals ordered the disclosure of those records, notwithstanding the officer's contention that that was entirely private, was his business and not the public's business. The courts found in both those cases not so. We don't see any difference in the Fiala case. And we've asked it to be put on the agenda. Would like, you know, would like the council and your city attorney to look at these two cases and come back with a decision, at least having looked at the two leading cases involving police and public records, and give a response to Mr. Weldon's request. And Mr. Aziz invited Mr. Weldon to come down here and make that request, and so I'm making that for him. I read cases and he doesn't. That's just the nature of the beast. But they're very well-written cases, and if you look at them, I think you would find very little difference between the issues in the case. And again, that's, you know, this case goes to the district attorney, they make the disclosure decision, that goes to the Court of Appeals. No trial court is, can disregard these opinions. They're binding unless a court, the Court of Appeals can find some way to distinguish the facts in these cases. But I think if you read the cases, they're non-distinguishable. You're dealing with misconduct in both cases. In one, in the case of Fiala, he left the department. That's known, I mean, there's a, that release has already been the release of his claims against you and vice versa. That's already public records, so there's no real surprise that he left. So that's what I'm here today. I'm happy to answer questions, but our real purpose here is to request that the council set this as an action item, up or down, on the personnel records request at your next meeting.
I personally have no interest in rehashing this issue. This was handled under different administration. It was handled under different police administration. Those parties have all moved on. And in my opinion, it was handled in appropriate fashion, and I just don't see a need to incur further expense or waste further time outing whatever it was that Mr. Fiala may or may not have done.
And that's why I'm asking you to look at the case, because the cases say, it doesn't, it isn't your opinion about whether it should be disclosed or it's appropriate. That's not the decision. The question is, applying the statewide standards of the public records law, are they disclosable? And if they're disclosable, they're disclosable. It doesn't matter whether you personally agree with it, you're friends with them, you don't know them, doesn't make any difference.
Mr. Meadowbrook, if I could comment. One, I, you know, I didn't get copies of these cases until tonight. I know I have read both of them, but I think it's been six months or 10 months whenever we resolved the previous Fiala case and our favorite in the court. And if I remember correctly, one of these cases, one of the key facts was that the chief of police was still employed by the city. And then one of the key findings of the Court of Appeals was, it goes to his fitness with respect to carrying on ongoing duties at the, at the chief of police office. So I mean, I believe that would be quite a distinguishing factor in the facts of this case. That being said, I'm not, you know, I'm not prepared tonight to explain to the council or explain to you as to why those cases don't apply. We've made an analysis and I've made a determination based on the facts that I see them, the facts that I know based on state law and the public records law, that those records will not be released. You obviously have recourse if you want to go to the district attorney and challenge that finding that those documents are not subject to public records request. Also, the city council could, if they chose, want to consider that in an executive session if they so chose. My advice to them is not to do that, that it's been rehashed for many of the same reasons that Counselor Boland stated. I would ask them to allow me to handle this, and if it needs to go to the district attorney, I'm happy to make those same arguments to the district attorney and that district attorney, and ultimately, a judge, if that's where you want to go, could make the determination as to whether those cases are distinguishable or not. And I believe they are.
Right. And our, our request is that the council take a vote on it, you know, schedule it at some point and take a vote. If you want to follow the, you know, if the city attorney advises you to do it and you want to deny it, that's fine. We just want the city council to take a position on it so we can take it on up.
It's not exactly the way it works. I mean, if a council wants to make a motion to put this on a hearing, they can do that and they'll have a vote, but they have no responsibility to do that. The agenda is set by the mayor in discussions with the city manager. There are other avenues for city councilors to place things on the agenda if they so wish. And if they want to do that, they can do that, and we can talk about it. But I don't think it's up to you to try to put them on the spot tonight, to try to have a vote on it tonight, especially when they didn't even know it was coming tonight.
I had, well, we were told to appear and we're appearing. We didn't ask the council to vote tonight. I wouldn't want the council to vote until it reads the cases. And as far as I know, there is no, no action by this council that authorized you to act on the council's behalf on public records requests. So unless you've got something I don't know about, the council either has to act on it or we take it up on the fact that they refuse to act.
And what's your basis for saying that the city attorney doesn't have the authority to respond to a public records request?
I know, no resolution authorizing that. If you could point me to it, I would...
I'm not necessarily saying there's a resolution. It's obviously commonly done and it's part of my duties as a city attorney. They can certainly override those if they choose to do so.
In my experience, the city attorney provides advice, but the city attorney...
Mr. Mayor, if I could point out that we're past our time here.
Our time is out.
And I think that we've...
All right, well, I look forward to hearing for me.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Jody Zerflu, and I am a business owner at 536 Main Street here in Lebanon. This is kind of a two-part issue. It involves employee parking and then parking limits in downtown Lebanon. I have been emailing Mayor Aziz, and we've kind of gone back and forth, so I decided to come here and discuss this. So if I can, I can just read the email, and it kind of tells everything. My name is Jody Zerflu. I'm the owner at the Hairs and Salon at 536 Main Street. A few weeks ago, we had a visit with Sergeant O'Malley. He stopped by to check on our business and see if we had any issues to discuss. We did talk to him about our parking issue on Main Street. We are close to Main and Vine. We do not have a parking area for our employees. Most of the businesses have alley and parking access, however, we do not. Our only solution has been to park at the north end of the American Legion parking lot. They gave up part of their parking lot for some of the bank employees and people who don't have anywhere to park. We are all females at the salon, and we do have some concern with leaving our business and walking to our cars at night. We do work late evenings. I have people working right now until probably nine o'clock tonight. We have talked to the parking enforcement officer and to the previous city manager with no results. He did tell us that if we have a problem, to bring it to their attention, but then we also must have a solution. We did have what we thought was a solution, but it didn't work out for them. I have been a business owner for 13 years, and Main Street has a two-hour parking limit. The services that we offer at our salon can take between three to five hours. We offer massage, hair, nails. If we're trying to attract customers to come down to downtown, to the shopping district, how can we limit their time to two hours? I know before, when we had the parking enforcement who was there every single day, now they kind of come whenever. But when I first started, it was every day and he was on a two-hour limit. I was actually like valet parking, and I was moving people's cars around, which is not something I wanted to do. But two hours isn't long enough to get your hair done. You know, it's not, it's not long enough. So we want to attract people to come to downtown to shop. That's part of the Progress, Partners for Progress, that's part of sprucing up downtown and putting in, you know, the trees and the park benches. And here, we're limiting people that you can only come for two hours. Anyway, back to this. So we want to attract people and customers to our downtown shopping district. I think that we would love for our downtown shoppers to enjoy all of what the city has to offer. What about having lunch, looking at the antique shops, stopping by Herschel's for ice cream, going to the shoe store? We all struggle to survive as small business owners, and limiting our customer base only makes it worse. If you received a $25 ticket for shopping downtown, would you come back? We currently park in the city lot on the corner of Main and Vine, which has a three-hour limit. We watch for the parking attendant, and then we move our cars to another area if necessary. I would like to talk to someone about coming up with a solution for our issue. Would it be possible to purchase a permit or a sticker to be exempt so we could park in the parking lot? We have between three and six employees working each day. There have been very few times over the last 13 years where that parking lot has ever been full. We usually park back as far as possible as to not take up the parking spaces in front from our customers. We also have Main Street parking for customers, so I don't see where it would be a problem. We were told that permits were not available, however, I do know a few people that have permits. We would like to see if there's a solution that we can come up with. That was my email. Today, we went to lunch. At 1:15, there were four cars in the parking lot. There were four of us working, so that was a total of eight. When we came back an hour later, there were still four cars. There's 27 parking spaces in the parking lot and another 11 on Vine Street. So to throw Floyd under the bus, who happens to be my landlord, and he didn't know we were coming tonight, sorry, his business is next door, and his wife and his employees deal with the same thing. Where do we go? The only solution we've ever been told was that there was an empty lot across from the old post office, which is four or five blocks away. So we're watching for the parking attendant, we watch people's cars out front. If it looks like we need to move, we run across the street with our keys and move cars. It's ridiculous. We're trying to conduct a business, and if I don't have all of my stations full and people renting from me, then I can't pay my rent, I lose my business, Floyd loses a renter. And I know I'm not the only one. I know that there are many businesses up and down Main Street that have the same problem. So we would like to see what we can come up with to help.
Thanks for bringing this. First, one question I have though is, the initial reason for this was because the problems business owners were having with people coming and parking and then leaving their cars there all day. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, on Main, yeah, in front of your business, yeah.
Okay.
But as employees...
Sure.
Where do we go?
Are you part of Partners for Progress?
No. I used to be, yeah.
Because I've, I've had, I've had people with your same problem, you know, that hair takes a long time. But we've also had businesses come in to say, yeah, we need to shorten the time because I need turnover of parking spaces in front of my business or I don't make money.
Right.
And so I would love to see Partners for Progress brainstorm and, and come to counsel with a, with something that everybody's kind of on board with, which, you know, you're going to have businesses on both sides of that fence. But I would love for them to really kind of take that, look at downtown parking, and then come with some solutions. Maybe it's permits for employees, maybe it's, you know, just something. Maybe, maybe we have five spaces that are, that are a different timeframe, you know. I would, I would love to see them brainstorm that.
Well, and before the change of council, we did try to work on that. And before Partners for Progress, it was downtown Lebanon.
Downtown Association.
Association. So we did work on that. And we pretty much just got shot down and they said no, so that was that.
Everybody has a different need. That's the problem. So how do you accommodate everybody?
That is our problem. Yeah, that is correct.
But like in our parking lot, if we, with the previous parking enforcement officer, he kind of said, you guys go in the back and sometimes I won't see you there. Well, what does, and then we got a, then we, excuse me, then we get a $25 ticket. So that didn't work, you know. If we could designate the last 10, that still leaves us 30-plus parking spots open or something.
That still leaves the issue of the customers' parking.
Yeah, right.
That we want them down there. We want them to come out, oh, I feel marvelous, my hair is great, I just had a massage, ooh, I'm hungry, I want a sandwich, ooh, the new shoe store, I think they've got, you know? We want that. We don't want, oh my God, no, forget it, I'm out of here, I don't want to find another place to park, I want to go around three blocks over and around to try to get back to where I want to go. It doesn't make total sense for everybody. So I don't know what the answer is exactly, but help us.
Could we, could we direct staff to meet with the Partners for Progress, maybe and work on a solution for this?
We can, but the, the original email, just if I may spend just a few minutes.
I'll let you, I'll let you have a minute.
This goes back to May, early June, and I did send an email with the wrong answer. Downtown parking is like pushing jello. Where you push it down, it pops up somewhere else. And so one of the suggestions I made in that email back was to contact the chamber...
I didn't get your email back, I'm sorry.
Oh, it, it...
I, I got one back from Mr. Aziz, but I didn't get one back.
Yeah, it was dated June 6, and I can show you a copy of it after the meeting. It wasn't good news. It was, it was saying...
Oh, okay. Well, good, maybe I...
It was saying no, and then suggesting that the Chamber of Commerce or Partners in Progress, for Progress, need to be engaged because acting as Solomon, the council's going to do something that will help one group and hurt another group. And so there needs to be a business group that works on this and presents something that the business community downtown can, can, can work with. I'd be happy to participate in that, but it isn't something that we can do for the business group.
Who makes the rules?
Yeah, well, the city does, but the city doesn't get into parking control because it's beneficial to them. They get into parking control in the downtown because of requests from merchants.
We're merchants and we're making a request.
Right. And I think that it needs to be from a bigger perspective than just one group. Yes.
So we need a petition with how many people sign?
No, I think we need to do what was suggested, and that's that the city can try to sponsor a meeting with Partners for Progress to have a discussion about this before it comes back to the city council, if, if the council would like to see it come back.
Yeah, from my perspective, first of all, I just have to confess that it's been a number of years since I worried about spending four hours fixing hair, but it's... I think that, you know, from my perspective on the council, that I would be quite happy to respond to what the business community thinks is a good solution. I think the only concern I hear Mr. Nelson's saying, I agree with him, in that if we don't have a pretty broad-based group of business owners representing all the issues, it's hard to know which way to go.
Yeah, right.
And so basically, I'm with him saying, you know, put it back in your life, go talk to the rest of the business owners and help us come up with something that works and we'll pass it.
And if I'm not mistaken, I know that some of the previous council members may remember, but the whole reason that there is the two-hour rule is because of merchant response from before. There was a group of merchants that people were staying there all day and no one could shop.
And, and merchants complaining about employees parking in front of their business. That, I think is the number-one issue that other merchants have.
It was usually the person, the owner of the business across the street was parking in front of the doors.
Yes, parking. And then I think years before, the college was next, actually next door to us, and all the students parked out front. Yeah, I don't want that either, but then...
You know, years ago, when I worked in Los Angeles, downtown Los Angeles, where parking is very much of a premium as well, there were circumstances where business owners could give validation tickets to customers for specific, sometimes private parking lots, sometimes public parking spaces. But there's, you know, there's a variety of ways to approach these kinds of issues that can meet everybody's needs. Parking is limited down there, and that's always going to be an issue, but we'll have to come up with the best way that fits everybody's needs.
I think Barry just agreed to be a part of the committee.
Part.
Excuse me?
I think the train is a good, is a good breaking point. The five minutes is up, and we've even went over that a little bit. But why don't, maybe talk to Partners for Progress, and then we can get together with the city staff if that's necessary, and maybe look at some options, and then the council can look at that. Because I'm interested in looking at it, if the majority of the, of the business owners are unhappy with the current situation, absolutely.
Yeah. And because we work with a lot of different appointments, it's hard for us to meet, make meetings too with Partners for Progress or other, you know...
That's what's so cool about email.
So email addresses or something would be great, or somebody could contact all those other people.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
So, excuse me, if I may, I have a minute or so.
I'll give you a minute.
Of these ladies, who they're talking about the post office, that belongs to the moisteries, so they might have a problem there. This gentleman here, just like Mr. Hitt when he was managing, he talks about a rule or regulation of the city and you run back to California. This is Lebanon, Oregon, not California.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any other comments?
I didn't sign in yet. Can I sign in?
Okay, go ahead, sure.
Comment? My name is Janet Blair, and I have lived in Lebanon since 1984. And I live on Hyatt Street in Ward 2. And I want to talk a little bit about the crime in the area. See if I can chew gum and talk at the same time. Since we moved to, to town and started paying a water bill, we've had around 10 criminal incidents on Hyatt Street. I lived on, I live on the corner of Rosen, Hyatt Street, East Rose. And I've made police reports on some. Some of it's been vandalism to cars, some of it's in break-ins, some of it's been, and that's really quite, you know, that happens, siphoning gas, different things. The thing that disturbed me was something that happened a couple of months... The thing that disturbed me was something that happened a couple of months ago, and again, I did call the police, and somebody came, I have a walled backyard, but somebody came in between the houses through the back gate, and when I was coming home from work, it was in broad daylight, I saw him in the backyard, and then he left. I work in Albany, and so, two nights later, my son told me that there had been whistling back and forth during the night, and so, we got up and checked it out, and someone had taken a crowbar and was trying to wedge open the back gate, which is, which is around, I think it's around six feet tall, because I'm a little over five feet, but, and then they came back the following night and worked on it again. And so, I, you know, I called the police and asked, told them that the weather was turning warm and that they're out again, but this is what I observe as being a resident, is that men with backpacks riding bicycles, I think we've all seen them, and they go up and down the street at night. Some of us do our yard work after dark, you know, and maybe I'm out there at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, you know, because after all, I do work, so. But they, they were there, I think my son said around 2:00 a.m., 2:00 to 3:00 a.m., and but they, they're just routinely around that neighborhood, and we have seen them a lot over the years and the 10 years that we've lived there. And I'm wondering, is there something now, what can be done about these folks that just kind of look around for things to steal? I mean, I have a garden shed in the backyard that's padlocked, and it has the lawnmower and the hedge trimmer and, you know, my edger and power tools and things like that in it, so, all of those are pawnable. It's just, I'm tired of it, I'm just really weary of it. And that's, I don't, I don't know.
Do you have a, do you have an active neighborhood watch in your, your neighborhood? Do you know of?
And, yeah, but everybody's asleep at 2:00 and 3:00 a.m. in the morning.
Well, not everybody. There's a lot of people that work, my neighborhood in particular, two years ago, had the same kind of thing, and I'll, if I can eat some of your time, but we had a lot of car prowls, we had some break-ins, it's some, some actual robberies, homes were broken into.
There is a neighborhood watch in our neighborhood.
Good. We didn't have one, or actually, we had one that was old, it wasn't active, and so, we restarted that, and Deila Johnson did a great job of helping us get that going with new signage and all this information, and we got everyone on the same page, and they went away. And they, maybe they went to your neighborhood, but they went away.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
They left, and because we made a greater presence, we had people turn their lights on, we had people, you know, out walking around the neighborhoods in the evenings, they have a lot of great tactics, and if you haven't explored that, I would recommend you, you know, you do.
You have a neighborhood watch.
Are you part of that?
My block is part of that.
Great, yeah, well, it might be time to start meeting again and maybe getting going, because these guys can't do it all on their own, they do a fantastic job, but they really need the eyes that we have as citizens to help them, and.
Well, I guess what I'd like there to be, within the police department, maybe, is a discussion on what to do with people roaming around the streets at night with backpacks on bicycles.
Please do.
Yes, and I know that, you know, it's, it's not, I mean, at some point, and I'm, I know, and I'm just complaining because it scares me, and when are they actually going to be in my house, you know, sometime? And I, so, I have some options, I can move out of town, you know, I can try to protect myself, but it boils down to, it's, I see it as an issue, and I've talked to the police numerous times, you can't, and to your point, you can't be every place at the same time. And procedurally, if you don't have any reason to pull them over or, and then there's too many bushes, they hide when you see lights, and, you know, I mean, it is a cat and mouse game. However, I'm just bringing it up, you know? If you're not aware, then, and I know we all are aware of crime, but I'm pretty tired of it on my block.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't blame you for being tired of it, and I don't see it as a complaint, you being there complaining. What I would recommend is maybe you could come in and have a discussion with me, and we can come up with some options. Deila was mentioned, she can come out and do a crime analysis or an assessment of your house, look where we can hang some lights, look where we can, look what we can do to better secure your home. And also, you know, you're absolutely correct, if we don't know about it, then it's hard for us to come into that area, and especially if we don't know about it. So, maybe you could set up a time, and it sounds like, you know, you work in Albany, but I'm usually there Monday through Friday, you come in, call me, and we'll set up an appointment, and me and you can sit down and talk about what we could do better in your neighborhood. And as far as a neighborhood watch goes, that is a very valuable tool. If we can pull you guys in together, we can, we can come and talk to all your neighbors all at once and help and assist you guys in any way that we can. So, if you find the time, give me a call, and, or stop by. Usually stop by, I'm usually busy, so, call in first and make an appointment would be the best. But I encourage you to do that, and I can set you up with Deila, and we can take it from there.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from citizens? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the public hearing. Dean? Is Dean here? Isn't Dean doing the?
No, it's going to be Walt.
Oh, Walt, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Walt, if you're ready, come on up, please.
My mistake, Dean.
Go ahead.
Scared you.
It's scary to think of Dean doing land use.
It's hot, though.
And this is a quasi, do you want to introduce?
Yes, I think before I begin, our esteemed legal counsel needs to read something into the record.
That's right, we had a discussion about this, and I'm trying to find some way to not bore you guys with this every time, but Walt says I have to, so. This is a quasi judicial hearing procedure pursuant to 197, 763, the procedures are posted on the wall in two spots. We are required to follow this, these rules to make sure everyone has a fair opportunity to present the case and that we follow Oregon law. At the commencement of the hearing, councilors should announce any ex parte contact or conflict of interest. Ex parte contact is with anyone outside the meeting or with the property itself. A conflict of interest is when a counselor or a member of the counselor's family stands to profit from the outcome of the decision. We will then have the staff report, which will be presented by Mr. Wendelowski. It should include information which staff believes is relevant to the identified criteria from the city's comprehensive plan or land use regulation which staff believes to be relevant to the issues of the hearing. You'll then be allowed to ask questions and have discussion with, of the staff with the council. We'll then open it up to public testimony, the audience may provide oral or written testimony concerning the issues relevant to the hearing. All testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulation. Please note that failure to raise an issue including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed condition of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. All witnesses will be asked to sign in with their name and address and state their name for the record when they begin their testimony. Order of the testimony will be that will normally start with the proponent of the application, proponents of the application, which will generally start with the applicant. These witnesses will, all witnesses speaking in favor of the application will be allowed to provide their testimony, will then go to opponents of the application. Witnesses in opposition must provide relevant testimony to show that the applicant has not sustained the applicant's burden of proof, will then have rebuttal if necessary. At that point, we should close the public hearing. We'll be closed for deliberation by council only, no new evidence will be allowed once it is closed. Discussion will be limited to the, to the city council and the staff. And now is, it would be a good time, if you wanted to ask the council if they would announce any ex parte contact or conflicts of interest.
Does the council have any ex parte or conflicts of interest in the case?
Mayor, as a retired employee of Warehouse, I have some knowledge of the property, I don't know if that's a conflict of interest, but I just want to disclose that.
The question would be if you would benefit or gain from this annexation?
No.
Okay.
And disclosing that you have some knowledge of it through your employer, you're announcing that you've had ex parte contact, and that's fine.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Walt, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. In your pack at this evening, you will have a brief staff report along with an adoption ordinance that includes the de description of the property as well as detailed findings with regard to this case. There's also the necessary maps, applications, and the notice to the DLCD. This property is located at the east end of Milton Street, contains over 150 acres, formerly the Willamette Industries mill site, and currently under ownership by Warehouse Real Estate. Company wishes to annex this property into the city. Again, Exhibit B details the findings, I'll just summarize the three key points here. This property is located within our city's urban growth boundary, is located adjacent to the city limits, in fact, effectively surrounded by the city, and based on information supplied by city engineering services, facilities can be extended to serve this site. In short, this is developable property that is ready to be urbanized, if you will. Normally, when we go through this annexation, we automatically adopt a zone that complies with the underlying comprehensive plan map. In this case, this property is designated for industrial use, and we would adopt the industrial zone. However, in this case, the applicants wish to have a mixed-use zone on the property. In effect, we are changing the comprehensive plan from industrial to mixed-use, and in effect, adopting a mixed-use zone. Again, Exhibit B details the findings, I think there are two key points at this juncture. First of all, with regard to the industrial zone and mixed-use zone, we contain significant surpluses of both, well over, I want to say, close to 200 acres for the mixed-use and well over 500 acres of industrial. The loss of this property therefore has no direct impact. I think you will also note that most of our industrial activity has moved toward the west side of the city where we have adequate road transportation, also rail access. I will also note that Chapter 2 and Chapter 4 of our comprehensive plan has specifically noted this site should likely be changed to the mixed-use zone. I think this recognizes two important factors. One, the city has effectively grown up around the mill site. I've seen aerial photos from the '30s, and if you look at the latest one, you can see there's a heck of a lot of houses around the site that have been planted, if you will, within the last 50 years. The other thing, too, is the site contains a lot of significant natural amenities. Part of it is located within a flood plain, you also have the potential for river access, which in itself is an amenity. That is certainly available through the mixed-use zoning. The planning commission held their hearing in June, they unanimously recommended the city council approve the annexation as well as the establishment of the mixed-use designation and mixed-use zone. Unless there are any questions, that concludes the staff report.
Walt, I think it's a great thing, I think it's a good move that the planning commission approved that, I'm certainly in favor of those findings. Has there ever, I know this is probably out there a little bit, but always a curiosity if there's ever been any conversation about development plans.
Okay, a couple of things to note, with regard to the annexation, our development code does not require a development plan at this time. I will say that I've been in discussions with a variety of development plans, why don't we put it that way, but nothing is put on the table. However, I do, I'm glad you did ask the question, if and when that occurs, there will be at least one, if not more, hearings before the planning commission, so this will not be developed in a vacuum. Based on the size of the site, they have to go through the plan development process.
Well, from my perspective, I think that's a wise move by Warehouse to ask for that change, and I think it will enhance the potential development of that acreage and add a lot of positive things to the city. So, I would support the, the ordinance.
I was glad to see that our comp plan actually calls for that as, as being the ideal zone to be able to develop that property in a way that would best enhance the city, so.
I think, I think the council and credit back in, council and commission back in 2004 need to take a lot of credit for that action. I think that was definitely forward-looking. And for the record, one other site under consideration is the industrial land next to Cheetah Lake.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
We're going to have an old mill district.
What was that?
We're going to have an old mill district, like Bend, only better.
Casino, with a?
No casino.
Casino and a restaurant on the river.
Okay. Seeing no more questions, thank you, Walt. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll have responses from the public, anybody who would like to speak on this, in favor? Go ahead.
My name is Peter Strellinger, and I'm here on behalf of the Appclint Warehouse Real Estate Development Company. I'm a land use consultant, and I've been helping Warehouse through the process, and I have to say, it's been an extremely enjoyable process. The city's been more than welcoming and more than helpful, and following Walt and his staff reports makes my job really easy, because he does such a thorough job. Anyway, so I thought I'd introduce myself, Tim Shear, who's the operations manager for Warehouse Real Estate Development Company, couldn't be here tonight, he apologizes for that. He is on a church mission to Nicaragua tonight, so he would be here as well otherwise. So, again, we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on this property and to truly partner it. The next stages of planning and developing the property are going to be even more fun, so we're excited about it. I'll be here if there's any questions for anyone, and again, my name is Peter Strellinger. Thank you.
My vote could go either way based on how you answered this question. Can you guarantee a Riverside restaurant?
Could we see one?
Can you guarantee one?
And the vote goes either way, huh?
It could be close.
Let me, let me dodge it a little bit and just say, there's some really neat opportunities with that property, there's so much riverfrontage, the obvious ones are, you know, inclusion of trails, continuation of trails, and more open space, and that kind of thing. But with the mixed-use zone also, there's, it's flexible enough, I think, to really offer some very unique opportunities, and, you know, we've talked about all kinds of things from, you know, environmental type of campuses, corporate campuses, mixed with housing, to senior-type things, so, I mean, it's, it's a really nice zone for us, because it would allow restaurants.
So, that's a yes. That was a long yes, but I heard it.
It was a yes, but it wasn't a guarantee.
Anything else? Thank you very much, thank you. Anyone else for the affirmative that's in favor? Anyone opposed, like to speak? Okay, seeing none, close the public hearing, and I'll have the city attorney read the ordinance, the bill number.
Ordinance bill number 2013-3, ordinance number 2844, a bill for an ordinance annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the city council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, file number 12-09-46, and amending, amending the comprehensive plan map and zoning map, Warehouse Real Estate Development Company.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, approve ordinance bill number 2013-3 and ordinance number 2844. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? The motion passes. The ordinance passes.
I didn't even think it was legal to talk like that at this point.
What?
What you said.
The chair is giving a little bit of...
Was that illegal?
Really gives her some flexibility.
Okay, approval to award Fifth Street water line. Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What we have before you here tonight is a recommendation to award the Fifth Street Water Line Replacement Project. That is from Von Lane to our new reservoir that is under construction at this point. Not a lot going on, but we have actually started clearing the property. The water line was broken out of that in an effort to maybe save some money and time, and we had in-house staff design that. We opened bids for the project this Tuesday. We only got four, which tells me that contractors are really busy right now. You can see that they're about 3% less than what our engineer's estimate is, still well within the range of a good bid. So we are recommending that we award the project to Pacific Excavation. And I can answer any questions.
Have you worked with the Pacific Excavation?
Yeah, we work with them all the time. Yeah. They're actually doing our West Side Interceptor project right now.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Ron. Do you want to just hang out since you have the next couple items? Okay. Do I have a motion for the approval to award the Fifth Street water line?
I still move. Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the Fifth Street water line. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Okay, West Grant Street parking restrictions. Ron.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Probably picked a great night for parking resolution, it looks like. You can see from the map what this is based on. This is based on Centri-Tale requesting from us that we look into allowing, what they originally wanted was three 30-minute parking stalls in front of their new drop-off, their billing drop-off center, which is located on West Grant between Main and Second Streets. We sent out as staff, sent out letters to everybody on that block asking for any comment. And if you remember our last council meeting, we pulled that agenda item because we did get comment. I met with both, the comment came from the Funeral Home Director. I met with both he and the representative from Centri-Tale on-site. We discussed the issues, and both were amenable to one 30-minute spot right in front of their business there. And so we left it at that. I heard nothing from any of the other surrounding businesses. So as a staff recommendation, we would say that this is probably a good thing. They're going to have quite a bit of turnover from people dropping off their bills, but it's also something that council may want to consider as a bigger part of the Main Street parking issue, too. So we're good either way, but we were asked by the Centri-Tale to present this. So I can answer any questions? If anybody's got any questions.
Any questions? Yes, would you please read the resolution?
Resolution Number 2013-30, a resolution restricting street parking on a portion of West Grant Street within the city of Lebanon.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the West Grant Street Parking Restrictions, Resolution Number 2013-30. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Number four, Lebanon Community Foundation Grant Request Consideration. That will be by Dean Baugh. I knew I'd get to you sooner or later.
So during the process of the 2013-14 budget process, there was a request by Lebanon Foundation for a donation of $25,000 to the improvement of their property. That is in the 2013-14 budget. Council had some concerns about that dropping our contingency fund below the 10% target. It was pointed out that there were some items going through the legislators in Salem that would affect our PERS rates. Since the last council meeting, we did get a letter from the state saying that our PERS rate has been dropped 4.4%, which is a reduction in the general fund of $132,000. So that's a savings there. I will put a caveat. Since this was written, I think I heard yesterday, that there has been a suit filed by some union members to have that all overturned. So we knew that was going to come. This could be years in the making. We don't know. So there is that caveat out there, that there's a suit, and the savings could go away by the end of the year if the suit goes the other way. We don't know. But right now, there is a $132,000 savings, and staff is recommending that the council authorize us to release the money to the foundation.
Does that mean we don't have to take the $25,000 out of the contingency fund?
Well, it'll come out of contingency, but what we'll do is when we come back with the budget amendment later in the year, we'll budget this, and the money will go back into contingency. You know, right now, the budget's passed with this in the budget, out of contingency, but the savings will be there later when we do a budget amendment.
Time for it.
Any other questions?
What kind of an action do we need on that?
We need a motion.
I'm motion to approve then. I'm move to approve.
Okay. Motion.
I'll second.
We have motions been seconded to approve the Lebanon Community Foundation grant request, and that the money be moved from the, actually, it would be from the general fund?
Well, the money is already in the budget. What we need is a motion to go ahead and release the funds.
Okay.
Because you've already approved the budget.
Been moved in second for the grant request. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Dean is up next, amending Resolution Number 2013-21, levying taxes for fiscal year 2013-14 to include delinquent sewer and storm drain assessments.
So, this is, whoops. You ready? This is the item, when we're going through the budget process, I informed you that the one resolution had a bunch of X's in it because the delinquent sewer and storm drain charges, according to the state, they have until June 30th to pay those. If they're still not paid on July 1st, then we amend the resolution, and then we forward these on to the county to be included on their next tax bill. So that's what this is. We've taken all the payments that were made up through June 30th. They've taken them off, adjusted the list, and so now we're amending it to the $61,207.09 of delinquent sewer charges, and then $8,335.17 of delinquent storm drain charges. And there's a formula for the state. It's kind of weird. We can only look back 12 months on their bill, but 18 months on their payment. So there's this weird form this. So this doesn't even include all the delinquent charges, but the way the formula is, we can't get them in until next year. So that would be the staff report, and if it's approved, it'll go on to the county tomorrow.
Could you share with us whether the larger amount of that is residential, commercial, industrial?
Most of this is storm drain, sewer-only customers. A lot of them just don't pay. So that's what a lot of these are.
Sewer-only?
Sewer-only. You know, we have, I hate to say it, but we have no way of turning them off, so if they don't pay. And that's why the state allows you to send it to the county to be added to the tax bill, because there's really no way for us to out it without digging up their yard and putting a big cork in it. So, and that gets messy.
By definition, though, with Wayne's question, that's predominantly residential customer.
It's predominantly residential, yes.
Any other questions? Go ahead and read the...
Resolution Number 2013-31, a resolution amending Section 1 of Resolution Number 21, 2013, levying taxes fiscal year 2013-14 to include delinquent sewer and storm drain assessments.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Resolution 2013-31. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The resolution passes.
Thank you.
Number six, the city's contingency fund discussion with Dean Baugh.
So this was an action that was asked by the council to be put on the agenda. So this is just a short memo saying where we are now. The city doesn't have an official fund balance policy. It was, basically, it's unwritten. It was passed on to me by Mr. Hitt. When I first guided the council before him, made the, kind of the unknown thing, that they would like to target 10% as their goal. So it's never been put into paper. Something that we probably need to do in the future is to come up with an actual fund value policy, which would describe then what our goal is, where we eventually want to be, and then what we'll do when we want to get into it. You know, do we want to go below our 10% for, like, the foundation? So we'd have a policy in place saying what we would use the contingency for. So that's something we should look at, probably doing, is getting an official policy.
I really wanted to have this discussion because we should talk about what is the understanding, what is this council's understanding of what contingency fund is used for, and why have it at 8%? Why have it at 10%? What's the purpose of it, and what should we use it for? And I expressed concern in our budget meetings because, for me, a contingency fund isn't because the River Park structure is failing and we need to cede that with money. Yes, we do, and that structure is horrible. But contingency fund, for me, is there's a major flood in the city, or there's a major storm, and we need to pay overtime to the police department, or we're sanding streets for an ice storm for weeks. There's something extraordinary that costs the citizens a million dollars next year because of some natural disaster. But we had money in the contingency fund because we had the foresight, like not every community does, to try to have something in place for those kinds of emergencies, and to chip little bits out of it here and there because there are other needs in the city, I think is, I find a slippery slope. I don't know where to stop that slope, which group is more deserving than another for those, you can think of it as excess funds. I think of it as a responsible reserve. And so that's my concern. I would set a goal, I don't know if it has to be policy, but it can certainly be this council's understanding, and have the discussion of, you know, am I alone in that?
There are two ways to look at contingency funds, and I think you just well-described one of them. The other way of looking at a contingency fund is that during a budget process, not all, you know, budget processes are completely foreseeable, and so some of the needs, a 10% per year emergency fund would add up to quite a bit if you really reserved that amount of money every year. So I think there are two things we might want to consider. One is an operational contingency fund for the more routine kinds of things, so we have some little flexibility in our budgeting. And the other one would be the true emergency fund, which in my opinion ought to be cash-funded every year, although, you know, on an annual basis, 10% of the budget is probably pretty steep for that kind of a fund.
We're not talking 10% of the budget. We're talking...
10% of the general fund.
10% of the general fund, yeah, but we're not...
No, I understand that distinction. But even that, the point is, I don't think as a city, we've ever really truly put cash aside in the bank year after year after year so we built up a true rainy day fund cash in the bank that we're not touching except for emergencies. And in my view, that's a reasonable course of action to consider, although the 10% of the fund might be a little steep for that. But I think that's a philosophical conversation we might want to have.
Two cents. Typically, or at least the cities that I've worked in, and they've been big and small, and that's not to say that what Lebanon has been doing is wrong, but typically you have a fund balance and a contingency. With the fund balance of a sufficient size so the community doesn't, the organization doesn't have to go out and borrow money for the general fund before the tax turnover so they can meet their obligations, primarily payroll and the general fund. And then on top of that, you have a contingency amount of a substantial smaller amount than the entire fund balance that's eligible for those emergencies. What Lebanon has done historically is just call that whole fund balance contingency, and it is healthy compared to what many other communities have in terms of a fund balance that can't be touched under any circumstances, and then an emergency contingency for those items that do come up during the year. And they're often far and few between. I would suggest that the issue is bigger and part of a general discussion on asking the finance department when the new city manager is on board to take a look, as Dean said, at, it's not just, this is a financial policy that we should probably have on the books, but there are others, and you should really be considering some financial policies for the entire organization, utilities as well as general fund, and do it one time versus piecemeal, so you can engage the public and have them participate in making comment once versus trickling them out over a long period of time.
I think that's very well said.
And I recognize I'm trying to, I'm kind of kicking this can down the road, but it is a bigger issue than just developing a one-page policy for contingency.
That makes sense.
You're right. There is a number of policies we should look at. A debt policy, contingency policy, there's quite a few number of different financial policies that we really need, which, the excuses can go on. I haven't had time in the past to work on it, you know, but with Sarah here now, I've got more time to do finance director things, and so I'm actually doing a lot more of this. So these can be added to my to-do list to come up with, start working on all these different policies.
Any other questions, council? Okay, I think it seems like we have, is that a consensus then that we will maybe talk to the new city manager and look at that as far as maybe going forward with kind of more vast policies of several of the different financial areas?
Yeah, I think that's very good.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Okay. Our city attorney, Trey Kennedy, is up with proposed disorderly house ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. We've brought forth the proposed amendments to the Lebanon Disorderly House Ordinance at the request of both the police department and the city prosecutors, who are Jesse and Rachel. It's a pretty self-explanatory amendment. It does not require them to go out more than two times. They can start citing on the second time. And I think the chief will kind of describe this as the party house ordinance, party house amendments, and I'll let him do that. We've also done a definition of loud noise. I think there's some issues with residential noise and parties and that kind of stuff that's not necessarily conducive to the use of the decibel meters. And so we have incorporated a definition of loud noise for purposes of the ordinance. And I'll turn it over to the chief to kind of describe the law enforcement aspect of this.
I think you summed it up perfectly. Basically, this ordinance would allow us to take enforcement action. There's nothing more frustrating for an officer to go out when a particular person calls saying, "These people are having a party. You can hear the party, you can see the party. It's a very loud party. It doesn't read on the decibel meter, and we have to turn to the complaint and say, 'Hey, I'm sorry. There's nothing we can do until it reaches a certain level.'" Well, this will allow us to take some kind of enforcement action. If we get called out there more than once, we can start dealing with it. The way that the ordinance was written prior was we'd take two calls, and, I mean, that's just very frustrating for individuals who are calling, wanting our help, and for us not being able to help them. So I believe this just will give us another tool and allow us to take enforcement action quicker and more efficiently.
And I think this would satisfy the, council heard, an officer from Corbalis who lives in my ward. Last year, she came a few times frustrated, wanting to relook at the sound ordinance and the noise ordinance. And I think this is kind of a good blend between changing how we do things altogether and coming to solve some of the problems that she had trying to get action on a home. I like it.
How frequently does this occur?
I would say it's, you know, it's pretty few and far between that we get the parties that we want to take some action against, and, you know, we're not a college town, so obviously we don't have them on every weekend occurrence, but it does happen from time to time, and, you know, that part of it is where we want to take some action.
I imagine during the summer, too, it probably kicks in a lot more.
Yeah, and, yeah, coming into the summer months, we're going to have windows open, and people tend to see a have on a party. And this will allow us to go out there the first time, advise them of the ordinance, tell them if we have to return a second time, they could face a citation. This is something for us to have some teeth. This is something for us to have some teeth.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, would you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance Bill number 2013-4, ordinance number 2845, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter 9.04.010 of the Lebanon municipal code defining disorderly house and defining loud noise.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and approved? I'm sorry. Moved and seconded. Ordinance Bill number 2013-4, ordinance number 2845. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. A little tongue-twisted tonight. City manager report, John Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. The June 2013 city manager's report is in the packet. It's got a lot of good information from the departments that have been forwarded to you and the rest of the community for your information. I don't want to go over each of those sections individually. I wanted to note that Jamie had the good idea of adding a community calendar to the back of the report. That's a good reference for use on the activities in the community. And then I just wanted to hit the organizational highlights for the viewing media. A lot of work by the organization, especially Jamie and Linda, on the city manager candidate interviews that are starting tomorrow and going into Friday. So, we're excited as a staff to have some good staff work come forward on that. And we think the council's going to have some really good candidates to interview and pick from for your permanent position. Wanted to highlight Dean Baugh's information that he put on the table tonight from Moody's on our excellent rating and the fact that we do have a $12 million bond issue that is going out end of July. Money should be available first part of August, and that will allow us to pay our obligations to Lowe's. And then finally, I also want to highlight the good work of Ron Whitlatch, who has met with the city of Albany on some canal, some maintenance, some treatment plant design, as well as the build Lebanon Trails issues that have all come forward. All of those different issues are part of a larger relationship issue with the city of Albany that Ron is working hard on with the Public Works Director in Albany. So, we hope to have a good revised agreement between the two communities coming forward late this fall for you to consider. That'll set the basis for an even better relationship in the future between Albany and city Lebanon. That's all I have. Would offer to answer any questions.
Question on the administration. The new employee evaluation notice system has been implemented. Could you tell us a little bit about that?
That is... How do I put this? It is kind of a catch-as-catch-can. In the past, when employees' performance evaluations were due, some were done fairly diligently. Often as not, they were not accomplished. It's an annual performance review between the supervisor and the employee, and then it's reviewed by the department director, as well as signed off on by the city manager. Personally, I think every city employee is entitled to at least one sit-down every year with their supervisor to learn how they're doing from the supervisor's eyes on their performance. And this is making sure a centralized notification process from HR goes out and departments are held accountable to make sure those reviews occur.
Excellent.
Wow. I love this. I like the way they're reporting everything that's going on in their department. I just hope it continues.
Yes, this will be a direction from the council, I believe, to make sure that this continues with our new city manager.
Fantastic.
And I love that people can... It's on the website.
It's on the website, too, yes.
And I love that people can just... It's so open to know what's going on in the city. It's awesome.
And Rebecca, I think it was your idea at the last meeting, rather than refer it just to employees on the website, to actually push it out to the workstation. So, that's being done as well.
It's awesome.
Yep. Very good.
That's it.
Thank you, John. Okay, lastly, well, we have executive session, but can we... I guess we... I see we have executive session and then...
Public comments.
Should we switch it around? Yeah. Items from the council? Anything from the council?
I hate this chair.
Does it scare you?
She needs to go away. I always get this chair and you can't sit in it properly, so...
Okay.
I'd like for it to go away.
We need to fix that chair, maybe? Actually, since we're talking about facilities, the other thing that would be very nice if we could direct staff to put some kind of a film on that door or something so that... Right now, in the summer, it gets really hot over here. And Jamie think the air conditioning was much better today. Appreciate that.
It's pretty glaring over there, too.
Yeah.
I have one thing...
We're going to cut that chair up and put it on the...
There you go.
That's thinking outside the box.
That is. Save some money. I have one thing I'd like to read. I got an email today from a citizen, Alan Marcy-Trowbridge. "Mayor Aziz, it has been our pleasure to watch a dedicated city employee clear Riverview Park with his huge backhoe for the last week. Unfortunately, I don't even know this employee's name. The park I'm referring to is unnamed and behind Mayfly Street. This guy has saved... Slaved at removing brush and debris continuously while he's been on site. Rarely does he have an idle moment and doesn't seem to take a break. He appears to be very good at what he does and seems to be very dedicated and efficient. Watching him work makes all our property taxes seem much less painful. Hopefully, I've provided enough information you can offer this employee some recognition. Thanks for your time." And I just want to publicly thank the employee. And I've given this to Ron Whitlatch to make sure that we find out who that was. But that kind of dedication, you know, it's the old thing that it's what you do when people aren't looking, not what you do when you know people are looking. And being public employees, we have so many employees that are out in the field doing things. It's really neat to have a city where employees are doing this when people aren't looking. He didn't know anybody was watching him. It's really impressive, so... Ron, make sure you thank him for us, okay? Thank you. Anything else? Okay, at this point, we'll do public comments. One last opportunity for public comments.
I'm from Campbell and live over on Jaden. That's the subdivision that's about five years old with all the ground lawns. There's a reason for that. Nobody can afford the water. And I think you'll find that any major business, if the person comes in looking at the city and he goes down those streets in that newer subdivision, sees all the ground lawns, he's going to wonder what in the heck's going on. Other thing is using water and sewer funds for things not water and sewer, like for looking for a new police chief or paying hotel bills. In the HR fund, and always just using that money for that. I'm listening tonight and all the things that you've been discussing. I haven't heard one thing about saving money. How we can cut spending, not spend so much. That'd be something that'd be nice. And the other thing I heard here tonight was on the police presence, they've done a good job for me, anyway, patrolling the streets and all that. But we're losing so many of our young people to drugs. And when these people are caught, they're given a ticket, they're taken to the jail and released within a few hours. And I'd like to see the city council to give more teeth to our police and the jail to keep these people from dealing in these drugs. I guess that's about it.
Okay, thank you. One response I'd like to give on the saving money. We went through a full budget process where we all met and we had budget committees. We had citizens from the community and, you know, you're welcome to offer your services if you'd like to be on the budget committee at some point. And we went through all that. We actually did all that. That's why we don't really discuss it here, because the budget... We did that, it's done. And the budget, you know, we went through the line items and we went through the different items, seeing where we could save money. And so, that was all done. It's just we don't discuss it on our regular meetings.
Jason's my representative and he's done me nothing but good. I asked for something, next day I got it on my computer. And you also have answered by emails.
Good, thank you. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else like to address, council?
I probably should keep my mouth shut. I'm from the Young School. When I did something wrong, I paid the piper. This younger generation, like this gentleman's talking with the drugs and et cetera, there's no consequence. Hang them up from the nearest power pole by the ying yang. Or else, like I told that lady, she was talking about the people sneaking in her backyard. I said, "Sit in the corner of the dark of your house with a 12-gauge shotgun." But I understand things have changed since then and the cops' hands are tied. But we need to make a believer out of this drug outfit instead of slapping their hands and saying, "Now, go home, Johnny, and you just behave yourself and we won't bother you no more." It's a crock of bull. Like I say, I'm from the Young School and when we did something, we paid the piper. There wasn't none of this slap in your hands and say, "Now, Johnny, you just go home and behave." It's just like last year, we had a shootout in my neighborhood. The drug dealer in the neighborhood is still here. The other guy that shot him, he got to go to the big hotel, but the drug dealer's still there. So... Like I say, I'm from the Young School and that's the way things was done. And I think some of you went through the same school. And when we did something, it wasn't the cops, it was the old man that paid attention to the damn test because you just flunked it.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments? Okay, seeing that, we'll take an adjournment from regular session and we'll be moving into regular session after a five-minute break.
Executive.
Executive session.